Planning Board. Bill, killing me here.
Okay.
All right. Um, okay, I'll open up this meeting of the mained planning board. Today's date is December seventeenth, two thousand twenty four, and the time is seven oh five P M. Uh, we are holding this meeting virtually uh through the Zoom link. Um, members of the public applicants and board um can all participate through the Zoom. Uh, since this is a Zoom meeting, uh, please note this meeting is being recorded. I'm also going to do roll call to make sure that every member can participate. And I'll start with Natalie. Hi Natalie.
Hello.
Participate tonight?
Yes.
Uh, Bill Crenshaw, can you hear us and fully participate tonight?
Yes, I can.
And Chris Klein, the same question for you.
Yes.
Thanks. Um, Bill, um, we have four members tonight. Is Jeff not joining us?
Jeff is when they uh he told us last uh meeting, he's not here tonight, so we do need. Uh, this is a s- a special permit. We anything we do, we'd want to make sure uh it's a unanimous vote. That's good. And Taylor Bearden is here as um as well.
I just have to bring up the um the agenda again. Give me one sec.
All right.
Yeah. Uh, then we'll turn to item two. We'll continue the public hearing for twelve Bancroft Street. This is a site plan modification. Um, Taylor, thanks for joining us tonight. For the record, could you just introduce yourself again?
Hi, uh, Mr. Chair, my name is Taylor Bearden, partner at Civico Development, uh, which is the project sponsor for twelve Bancroft Street, uh, the applicant. Um, the address uh for our office is forty Jackson Street, Worcester, Mass.
Thank you. Um, Bill, do you want to um brief the board on um what changes have been made since last hearing? And what are what are our final assignments for today?
Yeah, uh, so the um. Board had asked the applicant to make several changes. Uh, the 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 first thing um was uh that the uh landscaping plan was changed uh somewhat to um be consistent with the request or from the applicant because of uh compliance with the historical um uh tax credits, and so that was necessary for that. Uh, the board asked for the um removal of a the uh slide and looming and seating as part of the um changes, and uh there was a relocation of a um the handicap spot in the public parking lot and the associated ramp onto the sidewalk. Um, the there was uh, it was a I guess you call it a reversion back to what was originally submitted where the um handicap eighty eight parking spot is closer to the park as originally presented. Um, I don't think there's anything else uh that was uh different on. Did I miss anything, Taylor? I think.
Other than the comment related to the pay in lieu for the tree, uh, the only changes reflected on the plan were moving the parking space, moving the uh ramp onto the sidewalk that is adjacent to the ADA space, and then correctly notating the demolition of the slide and the subsequent seating uh and properly noting that that would be at the direction of D P W.
Okay. Okay, I I have one question, Mr. Chair, if I could, if I could just ask the applicant about the parking spot change. The one, uh, a question, uh, Taylor, um. With the relocation of uh DPW, this is a DPW question, and they asked us to respond. Um, and if you could actually, one thing, I I probably should have done this in the first place. Uh, can you explain or tat better yet, tag on to your note? Why the parking uh the hand the ADA spot was relocated? From the proposed, what the change uh, what triggered the change back?
Uh, yes, may I? Uh, can you please enable screen sharing just so I can toggle to the plan here?
Uh, yes, you should have it, Taylor.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Chair, can you just confirm you can see my screen, please?
Yes, we can.
Okay, so uh, Mr. Namso, you had requested specifically feedback about the ADA space, so I'll I'll zoom in here so you all can see. So uh, as we discussed in our last meeting, um, the original approval had the ADA space positioned here at the corner corner of Elmwood and the park. Um, then in the subsequent revision that we put forth before the board in uh the November application, which was heard last Tuesday, uh, we had proposed relocating that space to the corner of Elmwood and Bancroft. Uh, the developer's justification had been that uh the adjacency to the sidewalk would enhance the usability of the ADA space. Uh, but we discussed in our meeting that it could be argued either way. The reason that it was originally positioned here is that it of the adjacency to the top of the sledding hill and uh the overlook area with the benches. So I think, I mean, I think it's either way. Uh, there are benefits to the positioning of both, however. Um, it was correctly identified at the meeting on Tuesday that the uh movement of the space to the corner of Elmwood and Bancroft would create a very tight parking spot here where my cursor is and would preclude someone from being able to back out because there's no hammerhead. If you follow my cursor over here to the private parking lot, you see that to solve this, there's an additional six feet of paving or so uh to accommodate a car backing out of the space to give enough room uh so they're not bumping up against the curb. We did not design that in the public space, and therefore, the usability of the parking lot was significantly diminished, which the board brought to our attention. So subsequent to that, we have revised the plan further back to the original configuration with the ADA space adjacent to uh the apex of the hill, which solves both the uh turnaround problem and also relocates the space to be adjacent to where the CPC uh application, um, the the public amenities which are under review by the CPC uh would be located.
Thank you for that explanation, and I I promise I will not torture you anymore with that stuff. But i- i- if you would not mind just sending that and just briefly what you said, a little letter to that, so I can have it on record.
Understood. Is that something via email or on letterhead?
Email will be fine for me, guys, from you. I would really appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I think I think Bill is just um just wants to make sure that um, he just wants to make sure that isn't that the applicant, it's basically not a planning board. The planning board didn't dictate that. He just wants to make sure that the applicant is taking the voluntary measure to keep that parking space where it is.
Exactly.
Yep. Um. Okay, um, Taylor, do you have anything else you would want to present for tonight?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair, just one thing I want to call out just for the benefit of the board here. So I told you verbally what we changed. I just wanted to show you. Uh, so here in the location of the slide, there's a note here, slide to be removed uh with the proper treatment after removal. And then if you navigate down to the bottom of the plan uh in the note section, as was requested of the applicant, uh, there's a note saying slide removal to be coordinated with DPW and uh the proper treatment again after. So those two items, uh, I think conclude that request, and then the third item uh, just to substantiate the um at at last meeting, it was requested of me that we come back with uh what we would feel was a fair price to pay in lieu for the three trees that are roughly located where I have green circles uh that we are no longer installing on the property as a result of the National Park Service feedback. And uh, just for the record here, those three trees were two and a half inch uh caliper, uh, red maple and Aurora Dogwoods. So uh, in order to get the pricing, uh, we called um Bigelow Nursery and got uh pricing for those three trees and then spoke to our contractor about labor. The total cost of uh labor and material for the three tree installs at the two and a half inch caliper size uh is two thousand four hundred dollars. So the amount that the applicant is requesting the board uh except for the pay in lieu is um, I'm sorry, uh, two thousand two hundred dollars. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Um, back to the slide item, do you have enough um direction and guidance to be successful with removal and disposal of the slide?
I believe that we do, uh, provided that staff makes Justin DiMarco and DPW aware that we will be seeking their feedback when we go to remove the slide. Um, the way that we would manage that is simply notify them of our intention and schedule and ask for any special conditions that they want us to address in advance noticing or uh inspections, et cetera, and we would just abide by DPW's request.
Uh, I did speak to DPW about that, and they're aware of that, and they're expecting it.
Thank you.
And did DPW provide any additional guidance on that bill, or was it just loman seed was their guidance?
Loman seed, but coordinate with them before you do anything.
And was there was there any discussion about just simply maintaining the current slope condition, and I presume that's what Taylor had in mind as well?
There was not. That was it. All that was that that they said was loaned and seeded.
Okay.
And that to be sure to coordinate ahead.
I I will confirm that is my assumption that we are just maintaining the current slope condition and that no additional um you know, no burdensome uh regrading plan is necessary. It's just maintaining the current slope.
Correct.
Um, is the understanding of the board. Um, and then on the tree item, um, does any, do members of the planning board have any feedback actually on either of those items, the the slide discussion or the tree items that were presented?
Sounds good to me.
Um, hearing no other uh feedback, uh, I we will proceed with those items as discussed, so twenty two thousand two hundred dollars for uh to the tree fund and then the slide as we just previously discussed.
Right, I believe I believe there was a typo on one of the emails uh that 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 came with the the submittal this afternoon. It was twenty four hundred, but it's twenty two according to the numbers, right?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I I the the substantiation for that number is uh four hundred dollars per tree plus a thousand of labor, equalling two thousand two hundred. Thanks for catching that.
Thank you. Um, two two thousand two hundred stated in the meeting. I think that's what um that's what's going to be maintained, so we overrule emails. Um. Bill, what other items do we have for this? Is there any other information necessary?
No, um, I think what we're doing is, um, let me see if I can uh, what we're doing here is amending um the original site plan and associated special permit and the um, let's see, I just did a staff report. Let's see if we can get that up and I think I covered everything in it. We would want to um, there we go. I'm gonna try to share it now. Let's see. Oh, somebody just entered here. Somebody else might have a public coming in. Let's see. Yeah. We have a, anyway, um, yeah, we do have another somebody else. It looks like a member of the public coming in, but I will, um, they might be having trouble joining, but in the meantime, I'll I'll um go over, share the uh staff report here. Can everybody see that?
Okay, I can see your um file browser.
You, oh, you can't see the report?
No, I see um, I see files.
You don't want to see that.
It's not the worst thing I've seen on Zoom and unintentionally built, so.
I'll bet. Probably not tonight. Um, let's try it again. We're having trouble. Somebody's trying to get in, but I don't know what we can do to help them. Let's try this again. All right, action button, boom.
Okay, now we can see uh what looks to be a staff report.
Okay, so um I believe all the dates are correct. I'm gonna ask because I did just get this today. Uh, maybe Taylor can take an extra eyeball at them too. But uh, what here, what we're asking uh the board to do is um, we would want to make sure the request modification is meets the criteria for our site plan approval and at the uh special permit on determination, or what? Yeah, there was a special one with us. Uh, any uh determinations remain consistent with the original use approved. Uh, and then what we would do is um uh approve the proposed changes to landscape plan, the pu- public area improvements um amending the site plan. This was the original approval date and the associated um decision date. But i- if the board is okay with this plan, um, we would amend it. The most recent would be um the revision date of December twelfth, twenty twenty four. Um, and then I the the conditions um all would remain the same with the uh um, the tree um, the tree um donation and the removal to slide and looming of the um slide area.
Okay, this is um and Taylor, I just always ask this before we close the hearing. Is there any additional information you'd like to provide before I we make a motion to close the hearing?
Uh, is now the appropriate time for me to ask uh Bill about the proposed treatment for the bifurcated approval for the CPC plan so that our CFO is not uh inhibited by the timing of any CPC funded work? Or would that happen after you close the public hearing?
No, no, let let that that's important. Yeah, you're right. Uh, so we wanted to make, well, we should make a condition that that, so if for some reason the CPC was not approved, the 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 approval was not uh granted either somewhere along the line, that that this, the modifications are um unaffected.
Through uh through the chair, so the only consideration, Bill, from my perspective is because the public park amenities plan is a standalone sheet within the set that we refer to in this. Uh, it seems to me that just uh some conditional language indicating that the public park amenities plan, although it's being approved, uh, is not um it's it's optional to construct and has no bearing on final approval or final plans as built for the residential project defined in the other plans. Some something to that effect. Obviously, that language was inappropriately complex, but.
That was, I was, no, but but so um, so basically what you, I'm sure the board um uh understands this, and we could, we could, we can uh share it with you before we execute the uh decision. But basically, what you're saying is that the the public amenities shown that are subject to CPC or other funding at this point, the the approval for the residential uh development is not contingent upon those being constructed as part of this project. And I would, I've slaughtered that pretty bad too, but I I I think between uh, we we can get something that makes, does the board uh have any issue with that?
Yeah, Bill, can I request that you not reference the CPC? Can you just call out the standalone improvements as detailed in sheet whatever um are provided as as a as an add-on informational sheet and are not relevant to the, you know, CO, occupancy, whatever.
Yeah, yeah, maybe you'll help me with that wording.
Yeah, I can do that.
Yeah, that makes sense. So standalone contained in sheet. What 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 sheet numbers that? Oh, we'll look it up and yeah, we'll come up with something, Taylor, and then what we'll do, I'll share it with the board. They'll see the decision. I'll share it with you before as well and make sure it makes sense. But if the board, I if if the board, I if the board doesn't have any problems with that, I I I think that's that's we should be easy to do. We're all not tired. And then we could put for the um the other conditions of approval would be removal of the slide uh and the um the uh trees. Um, so what what would you want for timing, board? What would you guys want for timing on the um slide and the um the the tree uh contribution prior to CO or or what?
Well, Bill, isn't the slide now just part of the thing? Part of the project? It's not a condition anymore. Tree contribution probably is a condition. But the slide's now on the plans and.
Yeah, that's a good point. All right. Yeah, that makes sense to you, Taylor, right? That's.
I would agree with uh Bill Crenshaw's interpretation, yes.
And the the tree, the tree donation is just a writing a check, right? So I don't think we need to.
Yeah.
That could just be before CO, maybe?
Okay.
Yeah, before CO makes sense.
Okay.
Uh, any other information before we close the hearing? Taylor, are you satisfied with um the responses?
I am satisfied, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
All right, I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
I'll second that.
Natalie, the only, you're the only one on mute, so you have to second it. Um. Uh, all in favor um to close the hearing by roll call? Uh, Natalie?
Yeah.
Bill Crenshaw?
Yes.
Chris Klein?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. That's four zero to close the hearing in favor, closing the hearing, Bill. Um, okay, Bill, this um this motion is a is a handful.
Yeah, I know. I I I.
Give me one second. I'll do my best. Uh, so are we, do I need to, the does the motion need to include the condition that was just discussed about um receiving CO without doing the additional um, the additional work?
Yes, and the standalone, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna um we're gonna word Smith the uh condition about the uh the standalone amenities.
And Chris, the standalone amenities are referenced solely on public park amenities plan sheet.
Okay, so items that were shown on the public parks amenity sheet, those will be done in accordance with a special permit.
Well, they're allowable, but the applicant's not doing them. They're being done by others.
Okay. Others, I don't have the sheets open, so that's the sheet. Um, that those are the amenities that will be done separate to the project receiving CO.
Yeah. Let's see here. Stop that and all right. Uh, Taylor, you want to share your screen? I'm having a problem here if you wanted, if you don't mind.
Uh, the site plan again?
Yeah.
Yes, shared. Is there anywhere you'd like me to navigate?
Uh, just to the 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 um, the plan that we're gonna uh eliminate from the um
There's the information for that plan. Is that where you want me to?
That's great. Thank you.
Yeah. So what I would do, Mr. Chair, I I would just, if the board uh is comfortable, I would say um we find that the uh conditions haven't met for the site plan uh amendment uh for the plan, and we can I can pull the dates up again and that the um the um associated special permit conditions remain unchanged and then a vote on uh amending the approved site plan and the associated special permit decision to reflect this, and I'll I can pull them up again, I think, if I get this in first.
If, yes, if you could share to those dates one more time.
Yeah, I'm gonna do that right now. Okay, you see, and you're you're good with Taylor's there, so okay, I'll get rid of that. Okay, can you stop sharing there, please, Taylor, and I'll move mine? And uh can you see mine?
Yes.
Okay. So the only thing that's not there, I would just say the conditions um for special permits remain.
I think I can, so then I'll I'll make a motion uh to find that the modifications as presented in this hearing meet the criteria of the special permit that are that are described in section ten point five of the zoning bylaws. I'll I'll further include that the conditions of the special permit from the original approval are consistent and will remain and that we will have the following additional con- conditions added that two two thousand two hundred dollars will be um donated to the tree fund prior to certificate certificate of occupancy. Uh, and that the um the proposed modifications demonstrated on the public parks amenities plan uh are not required to be completed uh to re- to receive certificate of occupancy. I'll also find that um that the modifications of the site plan, including the landscape plan and the updated site plans uh dated December twelfth, two thousand twenty four and the updated landscaping plan dated December seventeenth, two thousand twenty four are consistent with the special or sorry, are consistent with the site plan um criteria. And I, and we find the site plan to be adequate. What do you think?
I'll second that.
Mm hmm. So in summary, the motion is we we approve the modifications to the site plan. We approve the modifications to the special permit. Or we or we approve that the modifications made still re- still find that the criteria of the special permit uh is met and that we added the the two conditions as noted. So that's the summary of the motion. It's seconded. Um, all in favor of the motion uh by roll call? Uh, roll call, please, Natalie?
Yeah.
Bill Crenshaw?
Yes.
Chris Klein?
Yes.
And I vote yes. That's four zero uh to approve the site plan and the updated special permit. Thank you. Uh, thank you, Taylor.
We appreciate your help. Thank you all.
Thanks, Taylor.
Do you have any next steps with Taylor?
Uh, I'll touch base with him tomorrow. I I'll keep him updated. If I and if you just send me that little bit about the driveway, that would be help for parking. And I'll 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 touch base, but we'll get the dr- decision drafted, and I'll I'll show you the one. You you know, we'll make sure everything reads the way you think it should on the um public amenities.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate your time.
And thanks for, I I I tell you all that that um Taylor and Civico have, were again exemplary for their, the way they um communicated during the process, and I thank you for that, Taylor. It made it much easier.
Likewise. It's been a pleasure. Thanks all.
Thank you. Okay, Bill, um, let's turn to item three. This is, this is not a hearing.
No.
Simply just an item for discussion. Uh, it looks Uh it looks it looks like um there's an applicant from fifty old Marlboro Road that needs that's has a. Requesting a special permit from the zoning board of appeals. Would you mind just briefing the board?
Yeah, when when whenever there's a um. A special permit triggered in the water supply protection zone. This is zone two. Um. It goes before the zoning board, and they have a little different criteria, kind of like we have a special one with the downtown overlay district. Um but there's a y- you find um there's some findings that have to be done. Before permit is issued for any sort of development in the supply district. Um they also have a requirement that they have to. Solicit recommendations from the planning board, the board of health. And um. Conservation Commission. So in this case. Uh I met with the applicant. Uh who this is a commercial farm, to be clear. Um and there were a number of concerns because this location is also uh not just in the water supply district, but also adjacent to wetlands. Um so. Uh the I recommended that the applicant reconsider his. Application and work with a professional who's familiar with. Um working uh with both agriculture and in these uh these districts. Um so it it is not going to go uh to the zoning board anytime soon. Um the application is going to stay in house, so so eventually it would. Uh it will come before the zoning board. This board, I I prepared some general recommendations that were um. I worked with uh uh Julia and then before she uh went to DPW and um. Uh so they came up and those are reflected in what I provided to you. There's not a sense of urgency at this moment. If you we we can keep them, but I just wanted to run them by you. And and see what you thought, and um eventually we will provide them uh when we get the uh. The uh commercial farming application. Uh activated again. So I was concerned about the tree loss was um. I considered extensive. Uh and I I I really needed, I felt. I needed a plan, you know, a a regular site, even though this was just really using the land. Uh there are questions of greenhouses, of of coverage and things like this, so I wanted to see. Could more of a detailed plan. Um I had concerns about the loss of the tree canopy, as I said, and then overall um. Because I don't. Know all that could happen um with. Um y- the use of chemicals or whatever the case is um. I thought the best approach on this one was uh um recommending that. You know, uh no pesticides or weed aside weed killers and and insecticides and that sort of thing. Be permitted um because of the proximity to both the drinking water supply and the wetlands um. Uh none of it would be binding, these re recommendations, but if. Though this doesn't happen very often that we have this, this kind of approval last one was with one twenty-nine Barker Street. But if this board's recommendations were ignored. Or they went, the zoning board said, you know, that they felt differently. Um they do respond in writing. Um not saying that that could never happen. I think ours are kind of pretty straightforward, I think. But um. Y- they're taken seriously is my point. And and um so that's how it works, but as of right now, we don't have a date for that to be scheduled, so if the board wants to just hang on to that a little bit. That's fine, or if they're good with it. You know, we'll 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 let it go. Um and because of the proximity of the water too, I would imagine DPW is gonna be heavily involved with us as well, but. I would think the sport it would be important if this board was on record about that.
What type of feedback do you need from the board?
Just if you if the if there's anything else you wanted to add to the the recommendations. You know, if you thought about it, you can you can bounce it around, you know, if you want to, but um. You know, I I. I didn't want to make it um.
Hey, good question. How how would this um relate to the master plan goals of the planning board? Did you take a look at that? And. I don't remember there any master plan goals regarding agriculture development in town. But maybe 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 there was, I but I, you know, if there's. I'd just like to compare it to master plan goals.
I think that's a great point. I didn't look. I I I. I would imagine there's gonna be a lot of cross referencing with that because it probably. Um, you know, we're always talking about protecting our water supply, and I don't say that this is bad for the water supply. I'm just saying that the idea. Of losing fifty some odd trees. My hand just went up for. I wonder why did that happen? Um, I was waving and it, Lord, I just waved and it went up. And um, oh, it does it automatically, AI, okay. Um, so anyway, yeah, the 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 trees seem like an awful lot. You know, to lose. Um that to me means there's. Other impacts that, you know, with the trees that. I don't know how if they're mitigated then, you know, um. You know, because I'm thinking of like everything from, you know, reducing heat ion effect to to um, you know. Atmospheric benefits to stabilizing a soil to. You know. So that it concerned me, um but I don't say it's not doable, but I would like to have. A professional. I think it's very important to this. You don't want just somebody who's a new a novice farmer, who this guy is very pleasant, very. Trying to do it the right way, but I I I what we send them off to do was to meet with um, we send them to the state. Talk with some of the uh other farmers in the area and get a um professional to that's experienced with this. To uh address um water um concerns and other. Uh impacts that may be caused by us, and I need a we need a plan of some sort, because there was it wasn't clear that you stop, maybe I'm going to do um. Maybe I'm going to add uh greenhouses, which would. You know, have coverage or not, so need more specifics.
Yeah, I I think a lot of the stuff that Justin brought up in his response was important. I mean, not understanding. You know, saying organic and what that really means for what percolates in the soil to possible. Water supply and all that is very complex and above. My pay grade, so.
Yeah.
It goes all pretty, pretty important things to get a professional involved with.
Yeah, I I would think at the very least uh we would want that, you know, and um. And I don't know with, you know, Natalie, that's this is probably right in her wheelhouse with this stuff. I don't, is it feasible to to farm without? You know, pesticides and fertilizers and things?
Well, this is, I mean, yes, this is where I don't really know where. Sure, it is. Is it economically viable? I can't imagine it, but like I that's not my job to say that. You know, like I don't, I don't really know how to frame it if I. Think it's a bad business model to, I mean, he's gonna have to have Justin asked for uh like a pesticide list and all that sort of stuff. Which is fine, um but. I don't. I don't know. We'll see what he comes back with if it's a more deep.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to help him, and if I thought, um I mean, he's trying to do it the right way, but I I don't, you know, uh. Julia, uh who's familiar with this, of course, and everything met with him and did not think, thought this is just a bad idea. And and in that location.
I mean, it's it's surprising to, I mean, that seemed like a pretty minimal. Amount of water to use per day on something like this, and the the that's just speculation, of course, but. You know, if you're talking about drilling a well. It it seems like that would be a pretty significant amount of water being needed, which again is a drain on the supply.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't I don't think it's inherently a bad idea. Honestly, at this point, we're talking about a hobby farm situation.
Right.
Which I. I pulled up the master plan and I cannot find what I'm looking for in terms of land use. Land use in Maynard between nineteen eighty-four, five and two thousand five has decreased by sixty-eight percent. So I think if some guy wants to try and do this, let him figure out all the details and then we'll take a look at it.
Well, maybe I can I can ask you if I have any questions to come up to offline. About this stuff, but uh but but people do farm without pesticides then and and fertilizers, right? I mean. I guess, I don't know.
Thing is, I mean, so he he stated in his thing that he. Is going to be using organic practices. To actually be certified organic is a hugely complex process. I can't imagine that he's doing that. I think what he's saying is that he is. Not planning on using, you know, a certain set of commercially available non-organic pesticides and herbicides, but. Again, that's a really like if if he's delving into the world of organic, that's super complicated. I think that he's trying to. It sounded like he was trying to come at this, doing everything right, but it's unfortunately. If you have to ask permission like this, he's just gonna have to figure out a lot of that stuff.
Yeah. Okay, so that's that boards, but I don't have anything else on it right now. But then so you can.
I I'd like to add, um so. My better half is on the sustainability committee in town. And you know, we're we. Th- this topic came up and sustainability committee is interested in. Knowing how they can. Be more informed about certain topics such as this that would impact Maynard. Um and they're not, we're not really sure about the best way for there to be a a better line of communication between the state sustainability committee and. Topics that may interest them, such as this and others that would come up.
Yeah, that's a good question, because it's very unusual that the zoning board. I could see this board getting involved with it. But this is weird with the zoning board. Um when something is um. When there's an application presented. I I here's the concern and and here it it's no problem to send it to sustainability committee or, you know, whoever other boards we want to send it into. The problem is. That our deadlines. Like when we send out stuff, like when I get an application in. I have to have it, you know, posted and this and and our deadlines are are. Um I have so much time to get that to the board. And then once the hearing's open, you know, it may be different, but other boards that that are um. Particularly ones that are e- are um not familiar to be in the process, they may only meet every two months or something, and we, you know, it. They have to take it um if they're in the routing memo, there's a deadline, like so, for example, if I send this to. Conservation Commission, I need these comments by this day. Not and because we did this, we had this with other committees that meant well. But I had comments trickling in, not together, every like fifteen different people sending me. Comments in, so a coordinated response, I'm sure. It's it's that the chair's discretion for the planning board and for the 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 zoning board. I can't imagine they wouldn't welcome it. But but that would be critical.
It's I believe sustainability meets every two weeks.
Yeah.
So I think they're on a regular schedule. Um it's just how to get them involved appropriately, I think, is maybe the biggest. Question. Whether they can respond in time or not, it's a different situation, but I think the first step is trying to figure out how to get them involved.
Well, I think the best way to do it would be for the chair of the sustainability committee. Um. To to draft a a a letter to each or whoever they want to be. You know, um I will certainly always send them a courtesy one if they want, you know, of of anything. Um. Uh but I would send to the chair and ask if they would like to be considered in the process. Uh we have our own rules and regulations. Now, with the water supply plan, for example, that's that's a state, I think that's state, that's all done under state. Um. But I think we could, I think we could add them to it. I have to check. But if if that was what the board, this board controls the zoning bylaws, so it's up to them, but. But I think that's totally reasonable, but I I I think the proper way to do it would be communicate chair to chair and CC me.
Okay.
And um but the the one thing that's emphasized is that. I I the deadlines for planning and zoning typically are firm because they're set by law. And, you know. So.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Did I ma- Chris, uh Chair Chris, did that make sense?
Well, mostly, I was just wondering, when you say chair to chair, I presume you mean sustainability chair to the zoning. Board chair, because.
Well, or whoever, whatever board they want to be looped in with. And so me, so I mean theoretically, that I would imagine the sustainability committee would. Probably want to be looped in with everybody, you know, conservation. They're not gonna get much from zoning all the, you know, typically.
No, but I meant on this item, this item, they should just talk to the zoning board, because we're not, planning board's not middleman.
No, the planning board's not. They're they're just consulting on this, right?
Right. Yeah, I mean, this item, this item is just. If another committee wants to provide comments, they just need to provide those to the to yourself and the zoning board, right?
Yeah.
Not through me.
Yeah.
Okay, I don't want any additional work.
No, I think that I and I I personally think the zoning board would welcome it.
Okay.
But um I've been telling for Chris, Chris uh. Okay. Chriskey. And that's that's a all I have. I'm working on with everybody uh. To get our our all our little cleanups done, including the ADU changes. Uh when we have the ADU changes, which are minor. Uh I will send them to all of you ahead of time in the next week or so. Uh because we're not meeting until what uh for a couple of weeks. Um. But I want to get the, I want to get it referred. I want to get it sent to the planning board in a form of a memo. Make sure you guys are basically okay with it. Then we'll have it referred back to us so I can get it scheduled, so I will send you out. Uh our cleanups, uh hopefully in the next uh week or two. And that'll have the ADU, it'll have so a bunch of rink and ink stuff I haven't had a chance to tell you about. Uh it, we're gonna try to do the bike um. The uh bike uh uh uh. Parking and um. Some other cool stuff, new definitions, very exciting.
Very exciting.
That's all I have, sir. Thank you all for coming tonight. You, I really appreciate it. I'm sorry to um. Thank you for working with me on this.
Um happy holidays, everyone. Are we good?
Yes. Happy holidays.
Second.
Okay.
All in favor of the motion to adjourn, uh roll call, Natalie?
Yeah.
Bill Crenshaw?
Yep.
Chris Klein?
Yes.
And I vote yes, that's four zero to adjourn. Thanks, everyone. Thanks.
Thanks, everybody. Bye.
See ya.
Bye.
Be safe.